Board One, so a little bit about me without getting too depressed and being a Debbie Downer. I grew up all over Western Pennsylvania. I did graduate from ours. But the reason why I moved around a lot was a domestic violence situation. I can say that it took Pine Richland to give me roots. And it's primarily because of my children and the community. We just, we moved here a few years back and we fell in love with neighbors. We got to know other community members, you know, having little clubhouse events like this. It really kind of drew us in and we wanted to continue to raise our family here. My daughter started up Pine Richland, she's in the back corner. And her ninth grade year, she's a senior now, not gonna cry for her. And my son started in eighth grade and he's a freshman. So we have another little guy and so he is at a different school. I'm a big supporter that every student has a different academic need. And I'm for public schools, I'm also for other types of schools. Whatever that is and whatever that learning journey looks like for that academic student is what I think we need to provide as a community, as parents, as educators. And so that obviously goes to say that I'm for special needs and special education. I've already asked Riley's permission and have already blown down the water many times during this campaign. That she is, she was diagnosed with dyslexia in second grade. She had a tough road ahead of her. Now she is an incredible student. Part of the 10% of the graduating class has received significant merit scholarships. And is one of the reasons why I'm doing this. Because I think what Pine Richland gave her is deserving of every student there, including the two friends that are standing beside her and my son and any little Matthews that coming up in the community. So being a part of the community and hearing some of the stress and contentious behavior of the school board got me a little more involved. I will 100% take accountability. Previously, I can say that I was a sleeper when it said, when coming to school board meetings. You know, she was doing great, the school was doing great. I felt confident, so why did I need to attend? When I started to lose that confidence is when I started to attend. And what I saw was outstanding in a shameful way and concerned me a great deal. Especially with some of my background in my own upbringing. I, I thought that how, how is this reality? How is this today? How is this 2025? We're going backwards. So I definitely wanted to get involved and I thought it was important to get involved. Some of the points that Amy made, I mean, you're gonna hear when we get asked questions. I'm gonna make very similar points. I imagine that we're, many of us are on some similar tracks and opinions of some of the changes that we'd like to see in the community. We might have some different opinions, you know, but I think that it's important as board members that we remain neutral as bipartisan. We work together as a community and it's important to me not to put down others. And I think outside of that, I mean, I'm really, honestly, the biggest excitement of running is getting to meet so many more people in the community. So I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm really enjoying it. Got to meet, you know, these wonderful candidates up here as well as all of you. And I, you know, I won't continue to reiterate everything Amy said, but the school's safety, especially the lockdown are all things that are incredibly important to me as well as the special needs. The budget is 100% something that has to be addressed. My, I guess I just realized I didn't explain my professional background. My husband is third generation for a manufacturing company. We took ownership of it in 2020, so I like to joke. What do you do during a pandemic? You buy a manufacturing company. It was a crisis time. It was very interesting. We have about 115 employees. They're all family. We love our employees. Their culture is family. If you go to our Facebook page, you can see their culture. And I, what I bring to the company is what I hope to bring to the community and the school board. I love continuous improvement. I have many certifications in it, conflict management. I'm not, especially from my background in domestic violence, I'm not shy from conflict. I, I prefer to find ways to resolve it and make it a healthy place for everybody. So that is all the reasons why I thought it might be a good opportunity for me to set my skills and do something good for the community that I love so much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bob Stein. I live on Dicky Road in, here in Gibsonia. And I've lived in the district since 2003. I have two children in the district. I have 11-year-old at Eden Hall and I have seven-year-old at Hans. I am not as active in the schools as Mike. It's hard, or you're hard to beat. But I love volunteering and being part of my children's education. I'm a cafeteria worker, running coach. However, I can, during COVID, we donated a bunch of hand sanitizer to the school district. And very active in my children's education. I really, I really wanted to run for a school board because I was quite disappointed in what I was seeing and hearing with, with the, with the board that is out there. The fighting, the, and I'm a person of compromise. I said that. I've said that online and I feel that really that progress can be made when both sides work together. I mean, we are in it for the, this children's future, our educators. And I think that, I think that we're not really achieving that right now in the current, the current board and how, how they interact. My professional background, I consider myself an educator. I work with University of Pittsburgh. I educate business owners on how to grow their business. And as part of that, with business owners, we teach fiscal responsibility. And I think that that's a, a, a big point of mine that I would like to, to bring to the board if I were elected. I'm not opposed to raising taxes, but I would want to make sure that we take a look, as some of the other candidates have said, take a look at everything that is going on to see if there can be some saving. If taxes need to be raised, let's, let's raise them. But I want to make sure that we're asking, acting responsible with our financial budgets, budgets. Another big point of mine, academic excellence. My, my son has had some challenges in, in achieving academic excellence through his time at, in Pine Richland. And I really feel that we can push our children to be the best that they possibly can be. We want to make sure that they, that, you know, the kids are taking their AP courses, that the, that the PSSA scores are high. We want to push our children to, to be the best. And from some of my personal experiences, and I, I don't want to share, share specifically, but my son wasn't receiving that challenge until recently. And when he, when he started to get that, he, he's excelled. He's been excelling. I'm also, as an educator at University of Pittsburgh, who's really going, undergoing some massive cuts right now with our budget. I, I think we, we don't want to cut our education. We don't want to, we want to be there for our special education teachers and support staff and administrators. I'm using those services now through some of my children. It's very important. And we don't want to make sure that those are, those are cut. Safety is another big, big point. You, I wouldn't believe the hatred that has come to me just for trying to make a difference in my kids' lives. My, my wife and I have been shot at obscenities just standing in our driveway, just minding our own business, just because our signs are in our yard. It's pretty horrible. And I don't think, no matter what sign of the picture you're on here, that people should treat other people that way. We need to treat people professionally and respectfully. And I, I, I'm sup, I'm disappointed that, that that really hasn't happened in our school board and in different community members in our district. I, I, we'll go into some of the other points that you said, but you know, I really am in it for our children, all of our children's future. And I'm here to support our educators and our administrators and make a difference, so. Sorry, I was cheering up a little bit there. You know, a little emotional about some of the stuff.
I'm Mike Barber. I am running because I care. That's it. I care about our children. I care that children receive quality education. I care that children receive, have opportunity at a wide ranging of extracurricular activities. I care that our, our children have received all of the special education services that they need. I care that our library has a wide selection of books. I care that our community unites over our most precious resource, which is our children. This is the foundation of why I'm running. It's why I volunteer for the Hans Elementary PTO Board. It's the third year that I've been on it. It's the reason why I was a classroom parent. It's why I volunteer, like you said, for almost everything. I was on the field trip earlier today. I was in charge of, not in charge, but I was one of the main helpers for Kids of Steel. I run after-school programs for our school at Hans so that we can have free, we call it after-school, but it's just like an extended recess basically, where I lead them through freeze tag games. So the involvement, I see all of the dedication that all of our educators on every single level put into our kids and our community. And I can't sit by on the sideline and let people destroy it, undercut it, undermine it. Act as if they are not investing in our kids as much as they are. If our board majority was in the classrooms, in the school buildings, they would see this. It wouldn't be the discussions like Amy laid out perfectly, like I can't put it any better so. What she said, they're wasting time on things that are frivolous. We need to be focusing on the actual gaps that our children are experiencing. And if you talk to them, if you interact with them, they'll tell you where their gaps are. Like Bob was just saying, his student didn't receive it, but once it was addressed, he's flourishing. That's what our, our district is capable of and that's what we should be focusing on. Not these ridiculous, nonsensical issues that they are creating. That the book policy started with a book that's not even physically available in our library. It was only available online and it was checked out zero times. Yet we have spent countless hours sitting in these meetings, listening to these people discredit our educators. And I can't take it. So I threw my hat in the ring. I have some, some supporters that backed me. And I'm making a run at this thing because I think I'm the best candidate to unseat Christina Brusales, who is my main goal because I think she is the, the head of the snake. We eliminate the head of the snake, the rest will win. That's why I'm running.
And I, I just want to say quickly, Angel and I would have loved to have been here for the whole thing, but our sons are in a band concert that was rescheduled to tonight because of last week's storm. So please forgive us.
You both.
Have fun. Thanks, you guys. Everybody else enjoy.
Bill and Tanya will continue.
Yes, yes. Yes, Bill and Tanya, they're very capable hands here with Bill and Tanya, so.
Thank you.
How about that, Susan? I thought if, I have, and I think I handed out to you a page with the issues that, um, the issues that have, I guess, to say the board is confronted, maybe the best way to put it. The issues that have caused frustration for the people who are paying attention. And I'll, I'll read from the list. And I thought maybe what we could do is have, just go through them maybe fairly quickly because there are seven issues here and each of the four, I've already touched on them. Some, some more in-depth than others. Here's, here are the issues that, as, as I think collectively we all see them. Number one, interference by the present school board majority with text selection. Angel of Greenwood, University of Davis, probably the most notable example. And implementation of the new restrictive library book policy. Number two, a strong push against DPI initiatives and policies. Number three, changing parental consent for student group counseling sessions to opt-in versus the legacy practice of opt-out, which as I understand is working just fine, maybe three, or an estimated 3% of parents were opting out. Number four, present and looming budget shortfalls, which may not, or probably do not resolve from irresponsible spending, but which can be addressed in the near term with small village increases, but the school board majority refuses to consider an increase. Number five, looming legal bills, which if the board continues on its present course, promise to grow even higher. Six, a school board majority that operates with increasing secrecy and shows open disdain for public as well as student input. And seven, safety questions raised by the recent squatting incident. So maybe we can go down the line. Amy, if you could start with number one. And then Melissa and Bob and Mike, if you're number one, we can just go down the line to number seven.
Okay, perfect. So before I start, I think, I mean, I, we just assume that all of you know who we're talking about when we say school board majority. I think it's important that we say who that is. So number one, that's Christina Brusales. She is the leader, the head of the school board majority. She's behind the majority of all of their decisions. She speaks for them. She literally sends them emails during the meeting telling them what to say. Number one. Number two, Phil Morissette, he's the current president. Mike Weathorne, who we all know and love from the bathroom incident years ago that cost our district hundreds of thousands of dollars in national embarrassment. We have Lisa Hillman, who's not running for reelection, but we've all witnessed Lisa at these events. And we have Leslie Miller. So Leslie Miller is, we, many people who attend board meetings may not know that she's on the board because she doesn't attend board meetings. But she attends virtually and, and while the board meeting is happening, she is told how she is to vote and she does so. She is unable to explain any of her votes articulately. She simply does as she's told by the board majority. So that's who we're talking about. So when we talk about Angel of Greenwood, you know, that, that book was not banned. That was not a banned book. That was a book that years ago, our, our educators, our administrators determined that we needed an in-depth review of our ninth grade ELA program. So my understanding is that they conduct the review. What they were trying to do, I believe, is find a book that is a little bit more contemporary than your standard Tale of Two Cities, To Kill a Mockingbird, blah, blah, blah. Books that no kid wants to read and in fact, very few do read. They actually just ask ChatGPT to summarize it for them. So they decided, let's try to get kids to engage in reading. How can we do that? Maybe we could find a book that is more interesting to them, that they may actually want to read. So let's start looking at more contemporary pieces. And over the course of that, they identified many different options. They eventually settled on Angel of Greenwood as being their suggestion. For, I don't know how long, Mike, how long was it? A year, two years? They drug them on.
It was a year and, and then they found four books, but they didn't like those books. So then they restarted the process over. That led them to Angel of Greenwood. So it was around two years.
Mike's been in this for a long, Mike, Mike is your expert on, on how long they have delayed things. So they, they drew it out. They tortured our ELA teachers, literally. You know, oh no, go do this, go study that. Why do you want this? Why do you want that? They answered the call every time. They spent their time answering to the board majority. Followed, you know, jumping through their hoops, hopping over their puddles, doing as they were told. The time came to vote and why do you think they did? Oh, no, we don't agree. We don't agree with Angel of Greenwood. We, as completely entirely unqualified people, have decided that it's too easy for ninth graders. We don't think it's challenging enough. What is the qualification of Christina Brusales to say it's not challenging enough? Zero. She has zero qualifications to say that. And so all of that work that our program did went out the window. We don't have a contemporary book. We're still ChatGPT-ing it. And that's because our board was unwilling to listen to the professionals, which is what I touched on earlier. As far as the library policy, I think that it's important to point out, this is an example of the false outrage that I talked about. For months and months and months, we heard, ah, there's pornography in the library. We must protect our children. We must save our children from the pornographic library materials. I don't know if anyone came to board meetings where the, the people came, all these people would show up thumping the bibles, heckling our students who showed up to try to speak their mind, to share their, their experiences with adult controversial board members, adversarial adults. And our students showed up and spoke intelligently, articulately, and they were heckled by people who claimed to be Christian, claimed, claimed to be. I witnessed it. We heard it. We saw it. It was despicable. That is what we were told though. The community doesn't want these books in the library. Our constituents voted for us based on book banning, on removing pornography. So they passed the policy. It takes them, you know, all a year and a half. It takes us all of our time. It drives up our legal bills. It leaves us as sitting ducks for a lawsuit. Believe me, we're still sitting ducks. I talked to the SPLU. I know the plan. So we're sitting ducks right now because we needed to protect our children. So what has happened since March 17th, when this library policy was put into effect? Nothing. Zero books have been removed from our library. Zero. Every book that they claimed was pornography, that they claimed was harming our children, that they claimed they were protecting our children from, it's still there. Not one person in our community has challenged a book. Not one person from their church has challenged a book. Not one board member has challenged a book. Even though Mike Weathorne told us, if he had his way, those books wouldn't even be in the building. Well, Mike, you have your way now. Why are the books still in the building? And the answer to that is because it was never about the safety of our kids. It was never about the books. It was never about removing the books. It was about creating false outrage from people who thought that something terrible was happening at Pine Richland, who thought that it was their godly duty to show up and protect children from demons. That's what they created in order to garner support for themselves so that they could remain in power. What is the one thing that has happened from the book policy? Well, The Body of the Wife. Has anybody read The Body of the Wife? So the reason this book policy works the way that it does and the reason why no one who challenged the book is because it's not about the books and also because they know that's a First Amendment lawsuit the moment they remove the book from the library. So what did they do instead? They created a policy that they control acquisitions. That means that every single resource that comes into our building for any child.
Including donations.
Including donations, including electronic material. All has to be placed on a list publicly, undergo a minimum of a 30-day waiting period. The Body of the Wife waited for 40 days before it's allowed to be accessed by our students. So what does that mean? Well, let's see. If you're on a debate team and you're told, okay, here are the electronic resources that you can use to participate in your county-wide debate, oh no, Pine Richland can't participate. We can't participate because those electronic resources have to wait at least 30 days, even though they have nothing to do with anything in the book policy. They're not sexual, they're not pornographic. They have to wait a minimum of 30 days for our board to vote on them and then tell our librarians, fine, you can get them. Well, by then, the debate's over. Pine Richland hasn't participated. Our students have suffered. We can't take AP classes because the AP classes require books that we can't access. So this wasn't about that. It was about punishing our librarians. It was about punishing Dr. Miller because they don't like him and they were unsuccessful in firing him, which was one of the platforms they ran on. It's about creating that chaos. And when you think about The Body of the Wife, which that is the book that they pulled from the recent acquisition list, so they're allowed to vote on the list. Well, but the problem is during that 30 days, why do we need a 30-day waiting period? Well, the answer, according to the board, is so that the community can raise concerns about these books. The community that doesn't even care enough to challenge the books that, that's actually there, now gets to raise concerns about these books. Well, how do you raise concerns? Oh, just contact the board member. I don't know. Meet up at Giant Eagle, maybe? Talk about it in the checkout line? We don't know. We don't know. There's no process. We don't know who the community member is that's challenging books. We don't know why they're challenging books. But we know that somebody, somewhere, didn't like The Body of the Wife. I read The Body of the Wife. It's not sexual in any way at all. So I don't know why they didn't like The Body of the Wife, but what we saw happen was Christina Brusales said, oh, I heard that there's sex in it. She didn't read it. She didn't quote what it is. She just pulled it from the acquisition list. That book is not in our library and will not be purchased. We'll see if it comes back up. My guess is it probably doesn't. What will end up happening in a few years? We're going to start seeing these books that they don't like that are in the library, that they refuse to challenge. Pretty soon, some of those books are going to be checked out for the first time ever. And you know what's going to happen when it's checked out? It's going to get lost. Maybe it gets left on the bus. Who knows? Now, in order to replace that book, it has to go through an acquisition. It goes on the 30-day list. It's allowed to be pooled.
Even for replacements?
Even replacements. Everything goes on the acquisition list. So now you've enabled a book to be banned without banning any book. They're not doing it yet because they know they'll be watched. But that's the plan. And we were all lied to by them because they told us that the plan was to protect our kids. So now we're looking at a situation where either you don't care about protecting our kids or it was never about that to begin with.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, now again, can we switch names?
No, do it.
No, I know.
You gotta go, you gotta go.
I know. So I wear this shirt for a reason. Riley, my daughter's right there. She is gonna move away to Hobart. Yeah, I know. Hobart and William Smith come August. Riley applied to nine schools. She got into all nine. She received between 50 to 90% of her tuition covered, you know, from various schools or scholarships. And almost all was about controversial material essays. There was a significant amount of honor programs and she had to discuss about controversial literature or she was asked in interviews about certain questions. One of the ones that stood out to me that I remember she liked because she likes Walt Whitman and Al Islam, who kind of contradicts his religious beliefs with his way of living. And she had to not only answer questions about this controversy, but she had to reference material and books that she had read that also, you know, supported her argument for, for the essay as well as the interview. Riley, with her background in being dyslexic, has turned into an extreme reader. Her entire bedroom was all about building a bookshelf that could hold a portion of her books, but not all because there's more than, that allows the space. And she's great at those summer reading lists that teachers suggest. She is gonna read every single one, not pick just one or two. She's gonna read every single one. So when it came down to Angel of Greenwood, which I'd love to circle back on our personal situation with that one, it, it was no reader. She read it. It was a suggestion from her academic advisor that she read it over summer. She enjoyed it. And then I think it was her junior year where she got to participate in collaborating with the teachers to pick a book curriculum for the ninth grade class. And the students wrote argument essays on which book they thought the students in ninth grade would relate more to and would enjoy reading. And it turned out to be Angel of Greenwood. Um, you know, this was a big deal. Riley contributed to that. And I think she was quite proud that she got the opportunity to voice her opinion. Her brother, being in ninth grade, we were thinking, this is a great opportunity for him because he is not like Riley. He does not have the library in his room. He is not, if there is a list of books and his requirement is to read one, he is ChatGPT-ing it. I guarantee that. Um, you know, totally different student. But for Riley, she thought, this is a great opportunity for my brother to read a book that I think is really important and relative. Unfortunately, that opportunity was taken from him. So, you know, he continued to read the classics. If he read them, I'm not sure, but I think, I think in the long run, it was something that she was looking forward to. So outside of all the nonsense of this policy, the waste of resources that I think it is doing to our school, I, I truly believe and am concerned about where it is leading. I mean, our school is known for the academic excellence. Our community literally has property value that is greater than neighboring communities because of our school district. Many people move here because of our school district and because of the opportunities that my daughter had with these college merits scholarships. There's more scholarships given for academic excellence than in sports. I, I actually looked it up and I thought it was probably sports, to be completely honest. I was pleasantly surprised to know that it's tens of millions of dollars for millions of students given to academic scholarships for secondary. for millions of students given to academic scholarships for secondary education, where sports is about a hundred fifty thousand athletes and they get about three point seven million dollars. So what does that mean for Rocco, my son in ninth grade, and the other students that are moving through high school and middle school over the next course of the year? If the A P class can't teach or can't provide the resources, if they're not able to suggest these books and part of the curriculum, and they're not able to access it, is he going to have the same opportunities that she had? I don't know. And that's what concerns me because this, this policy is about censorship and control and it's not going to get our students anywhere except going, working backwards. It's not going to put our school district in the paper for the outstanding academics that we're already known for. And my biggest, I mean, that is my biggest concern is I truly believe that with this library policy, if it continues, and as you, you know, perfectly described it, these resources become more limited or non-existent to our students, then we're not preparing them for what's next because these colleges expect it. They expected that application, let alone once you're in the school. They're expecting you to be able to talk intelligently and critically think on controversial subjects. And if they're not prepared when they graduate, what does that look like for their next step in adulthood? You know, unless you're gonna lock your child up in the basement and say, okay, you're never gonna leave the house, you're really not setting them up for success if you're keeping that all hidden from them and not allowing them to have those resources and have that growth and learn that empathy and understanding about diverse cultures and struggles and historical facts that are real things like Angel of Greenwood. I just, I completely am speechless because I just don't understand why we are having this conversation. And I've seen the benefit that it can have on my student, let alone what it can do for others if it continues.
And let me, let me just thank you, Melissa and Amy. Because the, some of the answers have been long form and I love it. Let's not feel confined to do or by doing the bullet points in order. So Bob, if you want to pick any of those seven or eight, please feel free to choose whichever you feel like making most fondly about.
Okay. I'm gonna thank you.
Sure.
So they're really Chat G P T the book.
Absolutely.
Different day and age.
Oh, no, it's the same. It's just, it's more, it's easier. My son is far better than it, you know.
Yeah.
It's true.
Yeah.
So for the Angels of Greenwood, I'll just touch on that briefly. You know, that, that was recommended by the committee of educators. You know, I'm, I'm not an, I may be an educator, but I'm not an E L A teacher. I would have probably, if I were on the board at that time, I would have accepted their recommendation and tried to fit it into the curriculum in some way, shape, or form. That's what I would have done with that book. In terms of some of these other bullet points here, as I mentioned, the fiscal responsibility, and we do have a very large budget. And there, as Amy mentioned, there, there are a lot of things working against us with the taxes. But I would, I would, I would see if they're, not against raising taxes, but I would try to do anything I could to see where some cost savings could be without cutting special education teachers or other important parts of the district. This, I would do an exhaustive analysis first. One of the other ones down here, definitely the school with the secrecy. You know, I, the, the government's sheet with all the principles on it, I would definitely sign that. And I would be open to any discussion with anybody. And we would, you know, there is also, you know, we were talking about the legal fees, legal fees with the right to know. I would, rather than fight that, I would just provide whatever information was requested and, you know, be an open book and, and I wouldn't be, I would be against any secrecy in that regard. So I think that that's an important question that you had listed here. So there's a couple of bullet points. I handed it out.
All right. I'll jump in real quick. Interference by President School Board Majority with text election. I know that they disrespected Ms. Mitchell, who's the ninth grade chair for English, repeatedly to the point where she felt like she had to come and spend three minutes before a meeting as if she was a community member to voice her concerns. They wouldn't even allow her to participate enough in the discussion on the book for her to express fully what the teachers are standing for. She felt like she had to show up as a community member and deliver a three minute speech, and then our president cut her off at three minutes. So she didn't even really get to express everything. So the students, I know, take notice of this because they're telling me that the people that are being disrespected are the people that the children relate to the most. They see Dr. Miller. They see Dr. H in their schools all the time. And so these students notice how much they're being disrespected. The implementation of the new restrictive library policy is all garbage. I would scrap it, go back to the original policy. I would make two tweaks. I would say, make it clear that anybody that challenges a book, and I'm fine with any community member challenging because we're all taxpayers and we all have a say, right? But if they're gonna challenge it, they had better read the book from cover to cover. And then, at the very bottom, I would clarify that final decision should lay at our lead educator's feet. If you don't like the decisions that our superintendent is making, then you don't renew his contract. That's how the board is supposed to work. You're not supposed to be interfering as much. Strong push against D E I initiatives. That's what's got me in here was listening to Dr. Patterson talk about Policy eight thirty-two in two thousand before COVID even really hit. That's when I've been involved because I heard that man talking about Policy eight thirty-two, which helped with, one thing, getting minorities into the interview process. And so that was big for me personally. Changing parental consent for student counseling sessions to opt-in versus legacy practice of opt-out. That's mind blowing. Almost a hundred percent of our students opted in to guidance counseling. Colossal waste of time. We need to revert right back. The budget shortfall, the way that I would learn how to fix it, I would have Dr., not Dr. Miller, I would have Chris Jesewitz, who's in charge of our findings for the district, sitting right here. I would have Dr. Miller sitting right here. I would have Chris Jesewitz explain line by line the money part of it, and then I would have Dr. Miller evaluate the value of it and explain it to me. And that's how we would decide it. Anybody that knows Dr. Miller knows that he runs a tight ship. There is no low hanging fruit on this budget. We have to be mindful about it and we have to consider all revenues. It's just, that's what we have to do. Ballooning legal bills. If we vote these people out, we won't have ballooning legal bills. That's how we solve that issue. School Board Majority that operates with increasing secrecy. I am the least secret person you are ever going to meet. I am an open book. You want to know what I think? Just ask. Safety questions raised by recent swatting incident. Honestly, I know that they are making changes because they, they discuss this in our P T O meetings. They told us that they can't discuss a lot of the changes publicly just in the sake of leaking that information. What those changes are? I have no idea because I'm not on the board yet. But there are changes that I know went into effect at least at hands in other schools, including increasing the presence of the police at drop-offs and arrival. And so that's me just running through the first points real quick.
Thank you. Please, Amy.
Okay, just because I, yeah, I want to go through. So first of all, I, I mean, I, I do think that they probably are dealing with safety. They're just doing it very quietly and our board is not making it a priority.
Agreed.
And our board is also constantly undercutting our professionals, the administrators. They're constantly diminishing them, disrespecting their expertise. But then those are the people that are supposed to keep our kids safe. So like, should I trust them or not? Like, if I can't trust them to pick a library book, then how can I trust them to keep my kids safe from N R fifteen? So that's part of the problem. And I think that students, I don't know, Riley, could, could, may feel this way. I know that my daughter knows nothing at all. And so there's very simple things with that lockdown. One, our Wi-Fi didn't work. Our, our communications didn't work. If my daughter needed to call nine one one and say, he's outside room two oh two, she couldn't. It had crashed because our infrastructure crashed. They had no access to phones, internet, and text messaging. We were frantically trying to get snack messages through or Instagram messages. It wasn't working because our system was overloaded. And also communication to parents during that time. My daughter managed to say goodbye to literally like an uncle I didn't even know we had. And I still hadn't gotten a message from the school. It took more than fifteen minutes. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot unless you're in that kind of panic. If you're in that panic, trying to get through to your child who you don't even know if they're still alive, fifteen minutes has been a long time. And when that email came, you can attest to it. It was like nine paragraphs long. I had to read about the dog that was sniffing around outside before I ever heard, oh, yeah, we're in lockdown, by the way, because we got a prank call. Oh, oh, so that's it? That's what it was? That could have been instant. I knew instantly they were locked down because my daughter told me. And ironically, like, my son was in the school the day of the Parkland shooting. And I can tell you that back then, he knew instantly what was happening in Parkland. Instantly, those kids knew. And that was the day that we had a fire alarm at Pine Ridge Land because it had already been circulating on Snapchat to all these students. Don't go in the hall if there's a fire alarm because at the time, they thought that Parkland had started with a fire alarm. They thought that the perpetrator had pulled the alarm to flush kids into the hallways. We know now there was actually gunfire reverberation that triggered the alarm. But we didn't know that at the time. So the kids in the high school were told, don't go into the hall. These teachers are still teaching their mouth. They don't even know this is happening because they're not on Snapchat when a network of a whole bunch of high school kids. This was back in twenty eighteen. Okay, and I know that that day, my son literally ran home, exited that building and ran home when the fire alarm went off at Pine Ridge Land. Because the fire alarm went off. It went off at two thirty. It went off. And they, he ran home. He left his car at the school. We could go back and get it. So that's the thing. When things like that happen, and they made a fate, you know, obviously, when we locked down, kids didn't run out of the building, so they fixed that. But the problem is the kids don't know what's being fixed. All that my daughter knows is that after that lockdown, buckets showed up in her classroom to take the crap in. Am I wrong? Yes, yes, Elena. You now have a lockdown bucket in case you're ever trapped in this room with a mad gunman for more than six hours and have to relieve yourself. You can just do it here in the bucket. Don't worry about your classmates and your teacher. You know, we know Mike Weethorne can't even allow his daughter to enter a restroom that could potentially have a transgender female in it. But he's okay with my daughter peeing in a bucket in her classroom. That was what they did to keep our kids safe. That's what my daughter knows they did to keep her safe. She can pee in a bucket. And she still walks into the classroom. I don't know if you see them. Two of her classrooms is still sitting right there. Lockdown kit. There's your bucket. So that's preposterous, to be honest. But on here, because I know I'm on talking a lot.
Before, I was gonna say, before you move on, you know me and efficiency.
Yes, yes, yes.
Manufacturing one on one. Yeah. Just to go off of the, the security and the buckets and obviously that terrifying day. Look, I'm, I'm a person, especially for conflict management, you have to look at both sides, okay? So I see and understand this world is changing, especially with these gun violence situations. And our administrators, our educators, they're learning as, as it's evolving. So, you know, I understand that and I'm not putting any of their efforts down. But to Amy's point, we learned something that day. We have some gaps and holes and we need to address them. Fortunately, I was able to communicate with Riley. But what was alarming to me was that Riley's teacher that she was sitting with had no idea what was going on. And, and I thought, okay, that's crazy. I get maybe not telling the students, you know, because you don't want to instill fear. You want to keep them calm. But for the faculty and the staff who are protecting the students to not understand what's going on, all you're gonna do there is cause more chaos. So I, it was alarming to me that they didn't have proper procedure in place for that. I mean, again, I'm a small business owner. We have a hundred and fifteen employees. With all this gun violence, we implemented a policy where if somebody comes in and there's a shooter, how are we gonna communicate that to our faculty and staff? So we took measures immediately, just as a small business, to set up a text process where if somebody knows that there's a shooter in one of the buildings, that, you know, immediately they can get a message out to everybody else so that they can evacuate, somebody can alert the police. Whatever the situation is, we have a very quick, easy process to notify the adults in the building and anybody's there. That was alarming. And I think, again, I can also respect that the board and teachers might be making measures to make our school safer, and you probably don't want to publicize that because you don't want somebody who might want to harm students that know all the details. But at the end of the day, I think our, our community deserves some answers, some understanding that we're working on some of these things so that when the next, and hopefully never, terrifying event happens, you know, we have a little bit more information. I mean, there, that day was absolutely one of the worst days of my life, I can say. And when she and her brother came home alone with her boyfriend, I just held them and, you know, they're all bigger than me. And I literally was just like, they're not leaving until I get all my husband. I really hope that that never happens again, but if it does, I would love to know what we're gonna do better to make sure that it's safer for them.
Right, yeah. I agree. It's just the acknowledgement that there were holes. You know, I get it. You can't tell us what they're gonna do to patch them, but there hasn't even been an acknowledgement that anything went wrong. So that's a problem. As far as on here, and also like just to touch on the deep, on the opt-in, opt-out with counseling. On that day, interestingly, I'm, I'm a friend of one of the Eden Hall counselors, and she informed me that there were several students at Eden Hall who actually had received communication through cell phones that their loved ones were part of the lockdown. And so there were students at Eden Hall that day who were scared and were traumatized because they didn't know what was happening. Their sibling or, or parent may have been in the building and they had no information. And there were students in Eden Hall who sought help from the counselors because they were scared. And our counselors, because of the opt-in, opt-out policy, had to tell those students on that day that they could not help them.
Really?
Let that sink in. They couldn't help them. And the reason why.
Because they didn't have time to go through.
Because they didn't have time to go through and opt-in. Correct. Little kids asking for help in a tragic situation were turned away. And our board knew this would happen. They were told it would happen because they couldn't exercise and opt-in for that specific situation. They would have had to call everyone in the district and say, do you opt your kid into crisis management counseling? Yes? Okay. Come back, Johnny. We can talk to you.
To, 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 to be clear, my daughter went to the counselor with a number of friends, and they were absolutely, they spent a lot of time with counseling.
Okay.
So, so it could have been.
I'm glad to hear that.
Been opt-in more broadly, but it's, that, that was not across the board.
Okay, so that's perfect. So maybe it's a matter of our counselors don't, you know, maybe they don't know how to exercise this policy and one did and one didn't. You know, the, the counselor that I spoke to turned kids away.
It's like the difference between schools, between ages.
Oh, it's between halls.
Yeah.
You have to break.
But they have different counselors. So one may have helped and one may have said, I can't. Or, you know, it is possible she can't share information. Maybe one of the kids that came to her was an opt-outer, you know, and
Quite often.
So it's possible that she knew maybe this family had some issues with counseling. I don't know. The bottom line is there's questions there about how these policies are going to be executed by the professionals. And with that one in particular, you know, obviously there's a question. But more than anything, we saw, when we saw the statistics, that it was a failure. No one opted out. Like, they all opted in, all except for a small handful. And so when our board was given the opportunity very recently to fix that problem, they were told, okay, look, you did this policy. The community didn't happen. They weren't happening. So do you want to fix it and go back to the way it used to be when we could help our kids without worrying about lawsuits? And they said, no. They said, no, we want to keep it. We want to keep it the way it is. We want to keep that work for our counselors, even though they've been shown that it didn't work.
I think because of the fear that they have put in to all of us saying that if you're bothering your children to have counseling, then they are going to be, if they're transgender, you know, if they're having issues, they can't talk to you about it. We can, they can come to us about it and we'll have to tell you. I have small children. That scares me. So like, from the other side of it, like, I get, like, I did, I was like, I don't want them to have to do my kids. My kids are in counseling. They have therapists. But like, for that, like, I don't want somebody, like, that, like, that's scary. You know what I'm saying? Like, from the other side of it.
Right. And that, to me, like, I, I understand that that would be scary for someone, but there has absolutely never been an incident or evidence that one of our counselors has ever indoctrinated a child with transgender.
No, no, I'm not saying. No, no, I'm not saying... Saying if my child is, that they're like, on the border of questioning whether or not they are, or if, you know, whatever they're choosing. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just...
And so I understand that you're afraid that they won't tell you, so...
Yeah, that I wouldn't be the one to help my guy, my child.
Okay, so I will tell you that years ago, whenever we were dealing with the bathroom policy, like, that was a result of the bathroom policy. Back then, we had a pretty massive suicide problem at Pine Richland. We were having multiple suicides a year in the high school. And there was a suicide where a child had been outed to his parents, a high school person, who was being bullied and was outed to his parents without his knowledge or permission. And that child committed suicide. And so it was important to the transgender people, you know, students at the time, that we protect the privacy of kids. And I understand, it's a tough balance between parental knowledge and protecting the privacy of kids. The reality with that policy is, number one, it has never had to be implemented. They have always, every time a student has come to them with an issue like that and has been hesitant to involve a parent, our school has one hundred percent success of convincing that child to involve their parent. Every single time, the parent has been involved. They have stated publicly in court filings that if that child still refused, and there was a valid safety issue, that they would not notify parents but would also not proceed with counseling for that child. It would end there. If you need help, that's great. We'll help you, but we need to involve mom and dad.
But that's what they led with. Like, that was what they were posting on there, like, "You do not want this counseling for your child because you are gonna be left in the dark if they're going through something, if they're having..."
Well, that's what the board majority led with, because they were fear mongering and trying to push their...
Right, so I feel like that's where that came from, why everybody was like, "Oh, I'm opting out. I don't want this counseling." You know, like, I wouldn't be able to like die by my child. I want to be there for my kid. I want to be able to help my child.
Right, and they misrepresented that. That was a line. They misrepresented it to you. What the opt-in, opt-out was was about the standard counseling lessons that our kids have always received.
Never, never knew that.
You know, the like, "Oh, let's talk about bullying. How do you report bullying? How do you report a trusted adult? What if you see a student, a friend in need?" Those kinds of lessons that we've always gone through.
And you would never talk about anything regarding sexual orientation.
No.
I can tell you that when this issue came up, I met with Dr. P., Dr. Paxton, who is in special needs, and Brian Clickman, who's the HR, in charge of HR. And they assured me that their policy, they have to respect every student's rights. But what their goal is, when they meet with the student that you're describing, their goal is always to encourage that student to, to include the parent. And then what it comes down to is constantly pushing, pushing them to make that connection. And the thing that kind of resonated with me was Dr. Paxton said, "Would you rather that child have no one to talk to? They're coming to a trusted adult that we are, every time we are meeting with the student, we are encouraging them as strong as possible to include the parent so that we can fix this as a, as a whole group." And so, um, I can't speak to the hundred percent or the legality aspects, but I know from the horse's mouth, they, their philosophy is, they want to attempt to get, include the parent at every single opportunity. And then their stance is, they want that child, that student, to have a trusted adult on their side that they can try to work through these, these challenges with. And so, um, that's Dr. Paxton, Dr. P., and, um, I forgot, Dr. J. was on there. So this assistant superintendents were on there, and then Brian Clickman. So, uh, that's their stance.
And I've read the lawsuit. You know, there's a Jane Doe lawsuit about this policy right now with a parent who is attempting to, you know, alleging that their child is at risk of being indoctrinated.
At PR?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
This was, this was encouraged by our board majority, the lawsuit was. Um, I read through it. You know, she alleges that they're giving puberty blockers to kids. But let me tell you, they don't even allow this to be a, I'm afraid. You, you can't even take that.
Oh, yeah.
But this person, you know, is widely and credibly believed that this Jane Doe is the person that they selected to run in region one.
Yep.
Wait, what?
Yes, yeah.
Well, she got thrown off the ballot.
She got thrown off the ballot, yes.
For falsifying.
But the Jane Doe, we believe the Jane Doe was their candidate for region one, the board majority's. Who currently has pending legal action against the school district, is demanding exorbitant amounts of money for literally no issue.
And that person is, is a lawyer herself.
Yes, she is, but she's represented by America First Legal, which is Steve Miller's, uh, legal organization. And so that person, her daughter never even stepped a foot in the high school. Never even entered the building, which is why the lawsuit is continually tossed, but she keeps up dealing. So that's a lot, that's a lot of our legal fees right there, and that was invited by our board majority. That was uncovered in a right-to-know request. So, but, but back to your point, I do understand your point. And part of what is scary about that, when they're, when they're painting those pictures in order to try to scare parents, you know, again, they're just trying to keep kids safe. And I know I would be very upset if my child went to a counselor and told them something in confidence that she was not comfortable sharing with me. I'd be sad and devastated that she wasn't able to come with me, to me. But me personally, I would be thankful that she went and sought counseling and sought help from somebody that I know cares about her, because I know that our counselors do care about kids. One thing that is important to think about, though, with that, you know, policy, where we have parents who are afraid, their position is that they will try and do their best, and they're very successful at involving parents. If they believe that, that it is unsafe for that student, for them to notify their parents, that's where the policy kicks in and says, "If there is a real danger to that student, you don't have to notify their parents."
Aren't they mandated reporters of that?
Exactly. Ding ding. So what the policy doesn't tell you is that in that situation, where you are in real fear that this child has a home situation putting them in jeopardy and in danger, you're a mandated reporter. You have to child it on that. So guess what? Parent finds out anyway.
So what does that mean, involving children and youth?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're, they're mandatory reporters.
You have to report an issue with a child's safety.
To the authorities?
To the proper...
Correct, to the child, to counseling a child, yeah.
Okay, that's the state law. Okay.
And just two points on it. I mean, one, again, efficiency and manufacturing, I'm sorry. But when you have the majority who are saying, you know, they're opting in, so you're creating this process where we have educators and administrators who have to document, hold compliance, you know, reach out. I mean, you're talking about just wasted time and dollars and resources, where if the original way to opt out was much more efficient, because if the majority wants to opt in, then why are we putting our staff through such a rigorous, you know, every student needs to be monitored and tracked and make sure that documentation is there? Or to your point, you know, hearing educators or counselors go, "I don't, I'm not sure if I can talk to her or not." Like, hold on, let me figure that out. And that's just creating a, a waste of resources. The other point is, again, from my background, it was the educators, one hundred percent, that I became the person I am today. I easily could have taken a totally different path. But I had opportunities to go and comfortably talk to, um, what, a counselor at one particular point in high school, and the teachers in elementary school. And I, I don't know where I would be if I didn't have that comfort with them, because it certainly wasn't, wasn't that I couldn't go to my mom. My mom was in the situation with me, you know? So it's not necessarily always that the, the student isn't going to talk to the parent, but the parent might be in the situation as well. So having that confident person that you can reach out to and not have to worry about the document side is, you know, incredibly important, I think, especially when we're talking about school safety and gun violence.
Yeah, and it still gives parents the right. If you're uncomfortable with it, you can opt out. That's simple.
Yes, yeah, it's, um...
So, yeah, so and, and like you, you touched on, which I think is probably what we uncovered, like, the, the counselors themselves aren't sure what they can and can't do, who they can and can't talk to. "I don't want to be sued. I don't want to lose my job. I don't want to be suspended." No. You know, whereas another one might be like, "Screw that, like, I'll take whatever they give me." And that's each of their, you know, that's their right. Some people operate differently. With regarding transparency on here, another thing is that it came up a little bit in right-to-know requests. So, uh, if you're familiar, like, in Pennsylvania, you have a right-to-know request in Pennsylvania. It's referred to as the open records law. And so when you have a school board that's operating with no transparency, they won't answer questions. They won't deliberate in public. I've emailed them countless times, countless questions. They just don't respond. The only way to get answers is to file a right-to-know request. You file an open records request. That takes time, that takes resources, that takes money. They inevitably delay it thirty days, thirty-day legal review. Guess what a legal review is? It's legal fees. And so you wait thirty days, well, thirty-five days, because there's five days, then you wait another thirty. Then you get your response back. It's heavily redacted, it's incomplete, it's not everything that you're looking for. So you have to now appeal. Now you're in the courts. It's taking that long to get simple answers to simple questions. And I can tell you that with the, back to the library policy, one of the things that I had pointed out when they were debating the library policy was that if you don't have a process to challenge those acquisitions, then how will the public know what has been challenged and why? What decisions have you made and why? Is, are you just scratching off every book that has a minority character? Or are you actually looking into books that violate the policy? There's no transparency if there's not a process to follow. Just have a form. Have the same form you challenge a book in the library. Why can't you use that same form to challenge a book on the acquisition list? Well, the answer to that is because then someone can find out. Then someone will know if we're exercising a pattern of discrimination or censorship based on, you know, authors or content. And so the only way to find out if someone has challenged a book on the acquisition list, since it's on one, is to submit a right-to-know request to see if anyone in the community has contacted a board member with a concern. I did that. So I did that in March. They knew it was coming. I told them for months it was coming, so I requested, "Okay, has anyone complained about any of these books on the list?" The Bod wife, someone must have complained about that, we don't know. Bottom line is, I got the answer back just about a week ago. Um, no, denied. Denied. You know why my request was denied?
No, my...
Because it's too much work. It's too much work for them to go through their list and implement their own policy. This would be too much work to tell the public what books were censoring. And so guess what? That's him appealing. That's gonna be appealed. That's gonna be legal fees. And that is going to happen every single month. Because every single month, we have a right to know who's challenging those books.
It also goes against this whole policy. Because if, if the goal is to protect the students, then why would you not educate the community, "Hey, we should censor this, this book." If you're not going to discuss what book we should censor and why, then, you know, other parents don't know that, "Oh, maybe that's not something you should read, Riley. Maybe you should hold off until you're a little older on that." So I, I don't quite, I mean, it contradicts itself by not educating the community as to why we're, why are we even doing this if we're not going to put in a process and share why we are possibly questioning these, this material.
Right, and it just creates, yeah, it's just more work, because we're gonna find out why eventually. We're just either going to do it by asking a question and getting a direct answer, or by this rigmarole of going through the courts to do it, which is what they're requiring us to do right now. And that, obviously, legal fees. The legal fees issue was also discovered from a right-to-know request. And a lot of people were shocked in the community when we uncovered the tremendous increase in legal fees. And some of the people who were shocked in the community were the board majority who was spending the money. They didn't even know what they were spending. Literally, had no idea. How is that responsible?
Government.
You think you call your attorney up and ask for information and advice, and it's free? Like, who is that? So, and, and we can have to submit a right-to-know request to get copies of the exact legal bills so that we can see where all that money is going, and a lot of it is going to their inefficiencies. Decent chunk is going to the Jane Doe lawsuit as well, which is still pending.
Is the, is the district using the, the firm that they selected when they hired GRB two years ago? Or are they using multiple firms depending on the legal issue?
Multiple firms. So GRB is still handling the Jane Doe lawsuit.
Okay, okay.
Tucker Arnsberg is the current solicitor, and then there's another firm you maybe know. Yeah, that handles property appeals. Which, again, like, I know we're running out of time and I, I talk a lot, so anyone can ask me questions. But I did bring here, one of the things with the budget, when we talk about that common level ratio and how properties have been reevaluated since twenty twenty-two to drop property taxes. I mean, right here, just a quick search of the Allegheny County website, you can pull up property tax appeals. So right here in just this little stack of paper, I have property tax appeals from twenty twenty-five that are costing our district almost a half a million dollars in lost revenue, just right here. Just did it last night. Took me about twenty minutes, and I already found a half a million dollars. Interestingly, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars of that annual loss in revenue is the appeal that AHN filed for their big old hospital over in Wexford. So they build a hospital here, they immediately appealed their property taxes, and their bill to Pine Richland is reduced annually by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That covers a couple salaries right there. So what's that, AHN? Why exactly are we hiring AHN to be our athletic trainer provider? Uh, no. Right across the street from AHN is the UPMC building, and guess what? They've never filed a property tax appeal. They're paying their taxes to Pine Richland School District. AHN decided they didn't want to give back to the community. So that's part of the problem, is that the way that the taxes are structured in Allegheny County right now allows these big corporations and some of these properties here that are private homes, you know, they're private homes that I could only dream of living in. But these kinds of, of corporations and wealthy people are able to reduce their burden to the community. And then we're forced to increase taxes to a senior citizen on fixed income. Well, that tax increase goes to these corporations too. So, you know, don't get me wrong, if we increase taxes, AHN is gonna be paying us, you know, sixty thousand dollars a year more, because they'll have the increase in mileage rate as well. But so will all of us, and so will our senior citizens, because we're not addressing this issue. And again, that's not only Pine Richland, that's countywide. This is a countywide problem that's going on right now. But we could be pushing back a lot more on it. We could be pushing back to, to organizations like AHN, who's right here. And if that got, if that was publicized more, that they're trying to shortchange our school district and putting us in this financial difficulty, doesn't look very good for AHN. Not at all. So I think at a minimum, we should get a little bit of a better contract on our athletic training subsidies.
Does, does any, if, if any of the four of you are, or all of the four of you are more or less finished on the list of bullet points, are there any questions that anybody whose attendance has that haven't already been asked, that have been answered?
I'll take one.
Oh, please, please.
So, it's commonalities across the board, right? Like, I want to kind of drive into this in detail, so, right? Like, when I think about commonalities, certain board members, it's a little bit bad. Transparency increased, right? Book policy bad. Safety improved. Budget's problematic. Let's focus on the budget. Like, it's a hundred million dollar budget. What experience and what, in thirty seconds or less? Right? What's your level of financial management acumen, right? And what experience do you have managing a large expense base? Because, no offense, Mike, even if there's no hanging fruit, always have to find something.
A hundred percent.
I manage multipliers on a hundred million. Always have to find something to roll up your sleeves. So how can each one of you, like, what's your experience in doing that?
I, I'm saying, so I grew up poor, and I understand that you have to make sacrifices. Like, I, I have two non-negotiables. You have to keep classroom sizes manageable, and you have to contend, you have to fund special education. Those are, we, we have to do whatever's necessary. Am I gonna be able to come in and say, "Look at this, this is where..." Like, I will do the budget. I go to the finance meetings. I talk to Mark Pishani. I ask questions. Who's our treasurer? Like, I'm familiar with it, but I also don't understand the value of each dollar, where it goes. And so I think it's important that we, we allow Chris Jesuits to, to present the dollars, and then we allow our educators, our lead educators, to define the value. And then we, as board members, have to come to an idea of where are the tough decisions that have to come? And then we, as board members, have to come to an idea of where are the tough decisions that have to come? Because we have to make it under. And so I understand, I understand that there are people who actually do this for a living, work those numbers, and so I want to learn from them. And then I want to create a collaborative process that benefits our families that are directly invested in it, and then our community members that aren't necessarily directly invested, but they're paying directly into it, so they should be part of the process. And, um, so it's not that I can go down and, and look at a budget and manage it, but that's not the board's role. The board's role is-
They, they have to understand it.
Exactly. And so the way that, like, so I understand how, how money goes through, and we have to allot certain amounts of money here and there, but it's our educators that decide that. And, and then we have to provide that oversight that says, that's not where our, our va- our value really is. It would be more valuable if it's here. Please explain to me why it's not more valuable. For instance, why are we cutting? There's four pair of jobs that they want to, they want to eliminate through attrition. Two of those aren't filled, so they're just eliminating them because they, they're going to stop posting for them. But there's all other two slots. Like, explain to me why that isn't valuable enough to find it within the budget. I can't give you that answer because I don't have all of the background information that goes into our entire budget. But I have the surface level understanding of the hundred and ten million dollar budget, and I know that seventy percent of it goes to our teachers. So we have to look at that other thirty percent with the magnifying glass. And we have to do it with people that understand the value and that for a, a living, they work the numbers.
My organization works with about fifteen hundred businesses a year, not your business, sorry. But, uh, any business owner that has a deficit, we, we examine all the costs first before raising the prices. Never has a business owner, uh, with that significant of a budget, uh, not been able to find the one point nine percent. I, my, my twenty years' experience working in businesses, that, that's never happened. So I think, you know, this is, this is a school district, it's not a business. It still is kind of a business. And I, I, I think that, that, you know, we have things against us, but I think at least this initial deficit can be, can be found.
Yep. Um, so I, um, in, in Six Sigma, I'm a Green Belt Six Sigma, I will never reach Black Belt because I will be fully honest and transparent with you. Numbers and math are not my strong suit, but analyzing the data, coming up with solutions, and understanding where that low hanging fruit is, a hundred percent. Uh, and, I mean, I not only do it for our organization, I get asked to do it for other organizations, to go in there, analyze that, you know, how many people they have in a process, are they overstaffed, understaffed? Um, looking at, I have saved hu- this is no joke, I kind of mentioned it in, I think, another meeting, I was being serious. So I have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars for organizations by changing the garbage bags that they are purchasing and the administration, o- office supplies that they're purchasing. So, again, to Mike's point too, I don't have all that data in front of me, can't necessarily give answers.
It's about what you do with the table.
Right, exactly. But this is not something that I'm unfamiliar with. It's something I do. In COVID, um, our manufacturing company significantly took a cut in sales, but ironically, we made more profit wise because of the initiatives that we implemented, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm not a financial person either, I'm an attorney, so I'm very anal and analytical about details. So I would also have to, like, like as Mike said, consult professionals who are good with money, who I trust, who can explain to me some, you know, different bond refinancing and things like that. But I, to me, we do run two businesses, my family, and, um, so I'm familiar with that. I don't know if many of you know my husband, Chris, who is a football coach at North Allegheny, but was previously at Pine Richland. And so one of the things that we are strong with is thinking outside the box and creative thinking. So on an annual basis for North Allegheny, how much money are you raising for that each year in the program?
Seventy-five thousand.
Just one person, seventy-five thousand dollars just for the football program. So he was raising that when he was at Pine Richland too, but, um, now he's doing that for North Allegheny. So that's not going to fix the budget, obviously, but that would fix some things if we were more innovative about seeking resources. I know that our current administration is very opposed to advertising, to sponsorships. They're starting to come around a little bit because they're seeing that that's where it has to go. Now we have this scoreboard that we can sell ads on. I mean, when you proposed the scoreboard for Pine Richland, what year was that, like, 2016?
Twenty sixteen, it would have been free.
It would have been free. That, that scoreboard that everyone's complaining about how much money it is would have been free for us in 2016. We brought the proposal to the district free.
How much did the present one, the latest one cost?
Six eighty.
Six eighty?
Six hundred and eighty thousand. We brought a free proposal to them, and it was turned down.
Because it, because it entailed too much advertising?
No, because it would require maintenance.
Okay.
They have to change light bulbs. But the real answer is because, yeah, back then, this was years ago, this was pre-COVID, Dr. Miller didn't want to commercialize our district.
Okay.
He didn't want that. And that's what this big scoreboard would do, that's what it does at North Allegheny. There's commercials on it, there's ads on it, there just is. I don't love it either, I like to go watch a high school football game, but the reality is, that's money. That's money right there. Naming rights is money. That's saving a job, that's saving a teacher. And so if we have to do it, we have to do it. So that's something that we should be looking at. And like I said, he's come around a little bit, we obviously invested six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the scoreboard. So he changed his mind enough to know that maybe, maybe the Kofartys were on to something a couple years ago, and they said how much money this would bring in.
Are there ads writing on that scoreboard?
Very few, but they can.
They're on, they've raised it for fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Fifty thousand for it.
Okay.
We're maybe about fifty, they're saying about fifty thousand right now.
Okay.
I can tell you that in North Allegheny, you, you can't, you can't even ask them how much they're making because they won't tell you.
Because they're embarrassed it's so big?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
They're making a lot of money on their ads, a lot. And so it's the potential, yeah, the potential's there. And so that's, I mean, yes, to answer your question, I don't, I don't have the expertise to go through line by line on a multi-million dollar budget, but I am able to question decisions, I'm able to analyze data. So I think that I could bring something to the table with that. Any other questions?
Does anybody else have questions?
I have a question for, uh, Mr. Stein. A lot of the person that you're running with Christina Brusales has been the impetus for all of these concerns that we've mentioned today. So how do you, um, just articulate your stance on that? And where are you with, kind of like that, because you're running with her?
It's incorrect. So.
Okay, correct.
So, uh, as I stated online, uh, I decided to run and I filed my papers without ever meeting Christina Brusales. So I met Phil, uh, Phil, the school president, and Mike Leeforn. Uh, I see the, I try to see the best in everybody. People, people have their feelings, and they might be justified about people on the school board. But I, I really do think there's good in, in, in everybody. And I try to work with everybody, no matter what their opinion is. I try to compromise. I am a Democrat, as I'm here with Susan's invitation. I don't agree with a lot of what Christina Brusales says. And I don't agree with a, a lot of what Chris Griffin says. But if they were elected and I was on the board with them, I would try to make the best of whatever situation we were given. I'm not going to walk in that door and hate everybody that has an opposing view of mine. I would try to compromise. I might lose, I might fail, but I will try.
Well, 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 I mean, to be clear, you're on a mailer that was mailed out to Region Two voters, Brusales, Stein, and Griffin.
Right.
And that mailer says that you should-
Says, says District Two.
Region Two, no, it's Region Two.
I know, it says District Two.
Oh, well, it does, I know, you guys don't know. But it also says to you, why you share the same values. What's the exact word?
Share values.
Share values. So I think what Russell was asking is, you share values with these two other people who have certain beliefs, you're advertised with them on a direct mail piece, how can you say you're not running with them?
I think the, the values that I'm in alignment with are the fiscal conservativeness and the responsibility and academic excellence. Those are the two that I think, and I, I, who's wrong? Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's, everybody-
Commonality, yeah, who's responsible?
Well, Bob, we don't, we don't deal with anybody yet. John, Mel, Mike, or with Amy or Melissa, right? So you're aligning yourself, even as a Democrat, you're aligning yourself with those two individuals. You're not even aligning with the Republicans like Amy and Joe.
Right. Well, you know, I, I came to the, the table late, uh, with my running to the school board. I probably could have done a more exhaustive analysis in choosing the best way to run. Uh, but, uh, I, I, my stance on things is what I said. I try to work with everybody, I would try, if I was on the board with Amy, or Melissa, or Mike, or anybody. I had Mike Barber sign in my yard for ten days while I was waiting for my sign to come in. I would try to work with anybody. And I'm not afraid to make tough decisions and speak up, uh, against things. As Chris, you and I work at the University of Pittsburgh, we're being cut a hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, ish. Uh, that's, you know, I'm not a fan of cutting educational support, either to us or to our school district. And I'm not afraid to speak my mind. When I, when I, when Phil did suggest I run, I, the exact words I said to him is, I owe you no vote, I will vote my conscience, I will vote my mind. He replied back directly to me, will you be respectful and professional? And I said yes. And that's an easy answer to me because I try to do that with everything I do.
I want to say something about it, because I've told, told him this specifically. Uh, I think that they recruited him to, uh, chime their shit. Um, I think that they know that they're toxic in the community. And I know that he's, uh, I don't know him, I didn't know him until he called me up one day. Um, but I, we have some mutual friends, and, um, everything that I've heard about him is he's a stand-up guy. Um, but I can't get over the fact that, that you aligned yourself with them. Like, if they recruited me, I would have said, okay, let me watch this video, because I, there's definitely opportunities that watch their complete disrespect and lack of, uh, interest in engaging our educators on all levels. I don't know how anyone can come to the table late and be trusted with, aligned with her. And I don't care if you're registered Democrat, I don't care if you are volunteering the schools a ton. Ashley has tried every second of every meeting to compromise with them, and they refuse. They ignore her and they cut her down just like they cut down our educators. It, compromise with them is proven to be impossible. So they wanted somebody that was in the schools, they're not in the schools. They wanted somebody that's nice, that's a stand-up guy, that they could give their, their other voters and push that narrative. And i- it's, that naivete scares me. Like, how do you not know that you're jumping in with Christina Brusales, who's creating all of the chaos? And so that worries me as a Region Two voter.
Fair comment, that's a fair comment. All I can say is, uh, I owe my vote to nobody. If I were on there, I would not, there's no majority, I don't, I would do what was right. And that's my word.
I hear that.
I, I'm curious, well, did you, you had mentioned that you met with Leslie Miller before deciding to run, or was that after? Okay. Have you ever-
I reached out to some of the other board members too, I even met with Mark Dafani, and then I was supposed to meet with Amy last week, but, uh, we had a little bit of a score.
Did you reach out to Ashley?
Not, I didn't reach out, reach out to Ashley yet.
So she's the only Democrat on the board?
Right.
But you didn't reach out to her?
No, I did reach out to everybody. You know, as I stated, I've had some medical emergencies.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, uh, I was able to reach out with Leslie. I, I did eventually meet with Christina. I had lunch with Mark, and we were supposed to meet with, uh, Amy, but it was rescheduled and her son's graduated from Penn State today, so I could really meet a couple days.
Does, does anybody else have any more questions?
I have a question.
Oh, please.
Oh, no.
Consider your mom.
Hi, I'm Riley, I'm her daughter. Um, so I'm a student, I'm a senior, I finished high school. Um, and I can say that a lot of my friends have talked to board members, and a lot of us have reached and tried to communicate our emotions. I can also say that teachers are talkers too. So they made many complaints in front of us, especially with budgets, because they even talked about, hey, we don't need these textbooks and you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of them each year. And we're telling you, we already have hundreds of them. So I'm wondering how, if, when you guys run the board, how you're going to actually hear the students and talk to them.
Okay.
Okay. So, first of all, you have to talk to them, you have to engage with them. As you know, I'm, I'm engaged with, from eating hall, and I'm engaging with students in the high school through students that come to the board meetings, because I am a constant at the board meeting. And so students have reached out to me to start an Instagram page, Students for Barber. Give it a follow if you're on Instagram. Uh, Students for Bo- for Barber, um, high school students have, their voices are being silenced repeatedly. At the January ninth academic meeting, the, with the library policy, three votes where they voted not to listen to them. Some of the ideas that I have to include the student, uh, voice is, I love the idea that Elise Duckworth presented to Philip Morissette and Leslie Miller when she met with them, when her and two other students met with them. Um, uh, and what they wanted to do was they wanted to include the student voice at the school board meeting. Not necessarily be part of the voting, but, but they wanted to have a, a portion to present at the beginning and end on how the, how the day is going, and then at the end, on the issues that the board covered. I think that that's an easy step to include student voices. I think there's appetite for that, as seen by high school students reaching out to me directly, and high school students showing up at our meetings repeatedly. They shouldn't be silenced, and, uh, I think that the next thing that we can do is just constantly engage with them. Like, it is sad that the board refuses to engage and talk to our students because they are the ones that are going to show us those holes. Just like what Eric was saying, uh, these, uh, the budget, like, there are some, some places where the budget can be shrunk, and Dr. Miller has shown that. He's shrunk it every single time he's come back to the drawing board. And so one of the ways that I think that we can include students is saying, what's unnecessary, what's necessary? How, what do you need to, to learn? And, and students can shine lights on, on things that parents, students, I mean, parents and staff don't see and understand. And, and so it's definitely a voice that I would like to amplify, and I already am within my campaign.
I would say just, thank you for asking the question. Because when I was a high school senior, I don't think I would have ever had the guts to approach, uh, the school board or, uh, school board candidates. But I, I agree with Mike, the students' opinions are important, it's what it's all about, it's the students. So it definitely, we should be heard.
So I have not spoke at a board meeting yet, and, um, there's a reason for that. I'm a person that typically, as a leader, I think the first thing you need to do, especially when there's conflict, is to sit back and listen. And I don't know if anybody else has been monitoring and listening as much as I have. What I notice when several students speak, um, as well as family members, teachers, you can watch the board completely shut down. You can watch that they're not, they're not engaged, they're not listening, their eyes are elsewhere. Sometimes they're even typing on their computers. You know, the individuals that are listening, maybe Ashley, not maybe, Ashley often, um, you, Amy, you can see it. You can see it as a student, you're standing at a podium and you're giving a speech. They're engaged, and they're making that eye contact, and they're hearing you. That is the first step to, to heck, hearing anybody's opinion, is you have to be an active listener. You have, you can't be thinking, how am I going to answer this person while they're still talking? Or how are we gonna, when is this going to end? Or, oh, you know, what am I having for dinner tonight? But the first step to good leadership in collecting the opinions and thoughts-
But the first step to good leadership in collecting the opinions and thoughts of others is listening and monitoring and understanding what they're all about. I, I personally think that that's lacking right now on our current board. It's actually sad when I watch individuals get up there and I see the disengagement from the board members. Um, but we, as, as a business, as well as just wanting to contribute to the community, we worked with a lot of the clubs and, um, and, but it's more behind the scenes, which I actually prefer. And I will say that I've heard from these teachers, I've heard from the students, things that they're lacking, things that they need, things that they proposed to the board two years ago and it has not come up on, on any type of agenda. And I can tell that this contentious frustration is growing amongst the teachers. So it doesn't surprise me that you said that they're kind of complaining, um, because they're not being heard. You know, they're feeling like they're being passed over. And I think it's incredibly important as a board member to not just listen at those board meetings, but also when you're out and about. Somebody might say something just in a casual conversation with you that you can take note to and make, you know, positive impact, so.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, and completely about the engagement, you know, like, it's, it's so disrespectful to watch how they act towards all speakers, but especially students. So I agree with the listening. I think that one thing that I think would be very important, I mean, we've all seen it, okay? So the three-minute thing and we've seen Philip Morissette have his absolute deceit bit when you hit three minutes. Like, there is no rule that says that, that you can only speak for three minutes. That is a rule that the board put in place to try to keep things, you know, under control with time. You don't want someone getting up there talking as long as I talk. So I give it that there has to be some guidelines for that. But like, I listened to Christina Brusalis butcher Robert's rules for like thousands of minutes. So if I was on the board and I had a student who was brave enough to come and talk, um, that timer doesn't start as far as I'm concerned. If a student wants to come, you can talk as long as you want to talk if you're a student. Because I went into, they're not going to talk for much longer than three minutes. But if they did and they got crazy, then okay, maybe we could bring them in. But just showing kids that they're valued, that we want to hear from them, that it's a safe place that they're going to come to, they don't have to be nervous, they don't think they're going to be barked at or shut down or fumble through their words because they're on a timer. That, that's, that's nerve-wracking. I mean, I'm a public speaker, I'm good at it, I'm, I'm okay with under pressure. But when I'm speaking at board meetings, like, I'm watching that clock sometimes because I know what I want to say and I'm trying to analyze, like, okay, do I have enough time? Maybe I should jump ahead, maybe I should get to this point because Phil's going to cut you off. And so I would say that would be important to me. I would tell the board, like, don't even start the timer, I want to hear what these students have to say and I want to give them a safe place to communicate with us.
Question. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, so, what did you say? Oh, right, so yeah, so, let me just.
Their, their Robert's rules here.
Okay. But if, then, if nobody else has questions, on behalf of, of Angel and Susan and Tanya, thank you to Amy and Melissa and Bob and to Mike. I think one thing that we learned, um, tonight, and for me, it was a learning process and also just a matter of emphasis, just how important this school board election is. Um, like, just to recap, we are in Region Two, we get to vote for, we need to vote for two candidates. On November fourth, there will be, there will be four candidates? But, but still, with Region Two, we'll still be just voting for probably two in November also?
It's definitely two.
It's two.
But if somebody wins.
So the primary is big, this, the primary is big for us in our region because there's six of us running, only four will make it through. So, you know, I'll be honest, I know neighbors who aren't the greatest at going for the primary. The primary is always a big one for me, but I know people who don't. You know, they go to the number one, they think that's important. And sometimes depending on the way the pools work, it, the primary doesn't matter as much. For our, um, region, the primaries matter significantly because, you, you know, you're looking at four Democrats, but they're, um, Christina's running again and I think, I, I, I don't want to assume, but I will say confidently that I would prefer not to see her name on the ballot after May twentieth. So, and the primaries definitely matter.
But she's only on the Republican side, so if you're registered as a Democrat, you won't see Christina's name. But you'll see Amy Churchick and the four of us.
But I just, I just think that if, if, tonight did nothing else, it just demonstrated how important it is that we vote on May twentieth and then again on November fourth. So, thank you, everybody.